Okay. Good evening, and welcome to the January 4th City Council and Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting. We're going to mix things up here a little bit. This will go quickly, but we're going to start with Stillwater Utilities Authority. And I guess we need to start by, would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance before we do anything else?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we get to ask you your favorite teacher?
That would be fun. Okay, I'm going to call the Stillwater Utilities Meeting to order, but before we begin, Mr. Dorman, did Counselor Zanotti sign her oath?
It's signed, so she's legal.
She's legal, okay. So, I would like to congratulate Counselor Zanotti for three more years on council, running unopposed.[84.75][84.75](APPLAUSE). Okay, now we can get down to business. Trustees, does anyone wish to remove an item on the consent docket? Or do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the SUA Consent Docket. Please vote. And the consent docket is approved with a vote of four to zero. That takes us to five general orders. A contract with Trace Technologies for installation of the North Fiber Optic Loop to serve the new power generation station, SUA-16-04. Mr. McNichol, what action do we need to take on this?
I believe Brad Stewart will be presenting a report on that. Or not? Now, we're, I think changing the order of the meeting may have made some folks not show, so. Mr. Blankenship will.
I will go ahead, and since I'm the director, I guess the buck stops at my desk, right?
It does.
And Blankenship, Director of the Stillwater Utilities Authority. What we have on the agenda tonight is for the trustees' consideration or approval of a contract to install a fiber optic network. The fiber optic network will connect the new power generation station along with a number of other locations, including City Hall. We looked at the possibility of actually going out and purchasing the capability of providing the communications that we need, and based on what we were seeing cost-wise, it became much more cost-effective to be able to do this and get, have our own private network. And also, from a security standpoint, that was one of the things that we were really concerned about with communications with the power plant, and we have to be in compliance with federal regulations, and so, security was a major consideration in doing this. So, we went out and we requested proposals from any interested companies. We received four proposals, sat down and visited with the lowest proposal to make sure that they were able to meet our needs, and they were. And so, we're recommending that the trustees authorize staff to enter into a contract with Trace Technologies for the installation of what we're calling the North Fiber Optic Loop. There will of course be a South Fiber Optic Loop that would come in later, that would pick up the kind of south and more western part of town and the facilities that are located there. But we're asking that you authorize staff to enter into a contract in the amount of $650,000, and authorize expenditures from the PGS project fund up to $715,000. That includes a 10% contingency. And I'll be happy to try and answer any questions you might have.
Counselors?
I think you kind of mentioned the answer to this, Mr. Blankenship, when you said connecting to City Hall.
Yes, ma'am.
You talked, in the report, it says, "High-speed connectivity to all of these facilities," and I just wondered what all of those facilities were. It's right, the sentence right before budget impact.
Right, right. There's actually a map that is attached to the report. Don't know if you got to see that, but it shows the loop, it shows the City Hall, the BLS, the Boomer Lake Station. That's a substation that will remain Ferguson Substation. So, it's predominantly electric utility facilities that are located from City Hall north and east.
Thank you. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve, to authorize staff to enter into an agreement with Trace Technologies for installation of the North Fiber Optic Loop to serve the new power generation station, SUA-16-04. Please vote. And that is approved with a vote of four to zero.
Thank you.
That takes us to B, Water 2040 Package A Financing Plan, SUA-16-06.
Candy Starring. Candy Starring has that report tonight. Thank you.
Hello, New York City Councilors, I'm Candy Starring, our Utilities Capital Program Manager. And we are coming to you tonight with the request to approve the application to apply for a loan, and two contracts as well for MFS and Mr. Kaiser to help us with some of the financing components of the loan. We expect Package A to be financed for about $30 million, somewhere between 20 and 30, and the construction for the projects will be sometime between April this year and mid this year, actually, till late 2018. The services on the contracts for the two services are going to be at about 0.25% for each of the Kaiser and the MFS contracts, and those two are also being requested for approval with this. Do you have any questions about the loan process, or what we're asking for consideration tonight?
Counselors? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Water 2040 Package A Financing Plan, SUA-16-06. Please vote. And that is approved with a vote of four to zero. Next up is Resolutions. Resolution CC-2016-2, SUA 2016-1. A resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board for financial assistance through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Program to finance water system improvements, approving professional services agreements and containing other provisions related thereto. Mr. Dorman?
This is the formal resolution that will commence the process that you just approved in the previous item of business that was before you.
Motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution CC-2016-2, SUA 2016-1. Please vote. And that is approved with a vote of four to zero. Takes us to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report, ma'am.
Mr. McNichol?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Counselors? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please vote. And we are adjourned from SUA at 5:39 with a vote of four to zero. Now, we will, sorry. Now, we will go, I will call to meeting the Stillwater City Council Meeting. And the first item on the agenda is a presentation. Mr. McNichol?
Where's Paul Prigle? I'll have him come up and explain the Shop with a Cop program and things, the Community Outreach Program. And you can bring the rest of your crew up with you.
All right, so we just completed our first-ever Shop with a Cop program, and basically, it's part of a bigger community outreach program that we started back in June. And just, out of one of those deals, we sent out an email. Officers and some, or even non-swarm employees came together, started meeting, throwing out ideas, and this program just took off. Then we started reaching out to the community. Everything we're doing is largely done on our own time, and also done through donations. So, we were able to sponsor 11 children this year. We used our counselors and our school resource officers to give us some candidates that one could benefit from financial reasons, and then also benefit from the positive police interactions. So, we took them on a shopping spree at Walmart. Some of these, well, all of these here were participants. We had 11 officers and 11 kids, and it was just a wonderful time. We also have a lot of other programs that we have coming up throughout the year. We've got a charity, Police vs. Fire, basketball game coming up in February, and then we're getting ready to start our Citizens Police Academy up. And then, in April, May, we're going to do kind of a fun activity with kids where we're going to have a police kid fishing tournament. We're going to call it Cops and Bobbers, and we'll have some prizes and stuff like that. So, anyways, we meet every month. We actually meet the first Wednesday of every month, and every meeting, we have more and more ideas, so we hope that it continues to grow and continue to get the support of the communities.
And although this is a representative group, you have about how many people involved?
We have, golly, it's, at least it does, and if not more. You know, people come when they can, based on their schedule. We try to move the meetings around a little bit to accommodate. But there's a lot of behind-the-scenes. We meet once a month, kind of regroup, but then we have a lot of people that are working throughout the month to get things done, so it's, there's a lot of support. Everything from internal donations from our officers to people donating time, community businesses, it's been a really fun event, so.
We really appreciate, as citizens, the effort that you've made to create these relationships. It's really beyond words. Thank you.
I mean, congratulations for the first three to 11 children, and I like to commend you, you're going to continue it through the year. It's not just a once-a-year Christmas time, even though that's a wonderful time to do it, it's, you're going to continue it through the year.
Absolutely.
So, is there a contact or someone, if the public does want to give donations? Is there a contact number or place where we can?
Absolutely. The easiest way that I could, I could explain would just to go to the city's website, under the Police Department's tab. There's actually a dedicated page for the Community Outreach Program, and it'll give information on how to donate if they wish. There's also contact information if they want to get ahold of me or someone else, so.
So, how does that Police Fire basketball game usually come out?
Well, we don't get to practice as much. But it's all in good fun, so. I think everybody comes out a winner. They let us win a little bit, so. It wants to come back every year, so.
When I saw this in the paper, I told Mr. McNichol, we just have to recognize what you're doing, because it's such a positive thing for our community and for young people, that we're just really proud of what you do on your own time. This wasn't mandated that you do anything like this, so thank you so much for your big hearts and for caring about our community so much. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, that moves us to the consent docket. Counselors, does anyone wish to remove an item, or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. And the consent docket is approved with a vote of four to zero. That takes us to public hearing. And, Mr. Dorman, item A has been removed?
Yes, we'd ask that you strike that from tonight's agenda. We're going to take this matter up through the Board of Adjustment, so there'll be no need to take any action on it tonight.
Okay, so that moves us to B, CC-16-05. Receive public comment regarding a request for a specific use permit for property addressed as 3098 East Sixth Avenue in the CS Commercial Shopping Zoning District. And we do, or, Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. McNichol?
And Erin Baggerly from Development Services will provide the report.
Thank you, Mr. McNichol. Good evening, Council and Mayor. Erin Baggerly, Development Services, here to discuss with you a specific use permit at 3098 E6 Avenue. Currently, this property is zoned CS Commercial Shopping. The applicant is here to request a specific use permit for a multifamily senior living apartment complex at this location. Their intent is to apply for a low-income housing tax credit, which is also on the docket for a resolution of support later on this evening. And they're coming in with, instead of rezoning the property, that way, if they do not get the tax credit or anything, the property remains as is with the current zoning designation, and this gives the owner of the property a little more leadway into future. As I said, multifamily senior living apartment complex is proposed here, with this building here, the larger building in the front being a three-story building, and the two stories, or the two buildings in the rear being one-story buildings. And as, on the previous area to the north is multifamily RTM with an apartment complex on a half of this property here to the, built here, already recently opened. And across the street, you have CS as well, and to the left, you have RTM, multifamily, or, and with this mobile home park at this time.
What is that, right across the street?
This right here is, I believe, the John Deere dealership in town and associated. This is part of their property as well. So, some retail establishment, also storage yards and all that for large equipment.
Counselors, any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Were you done? I'm sorry.
No, I was just, that's all right, that's all right. Couple of renderings here.
He'll be back in a moment.
One is proposed here based on the design of the three-story building, and then the smaller one-story buildings in behind, so, not a problem.
That's one way to speed up a meeting.
Yeah, it is.
I'm very sorry. Thank you. Okay, now, counselors, are there any questions? Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the public meeting. We do have one speaker, Colby Schwartz. Colby, would you please come forward? State your name, even though I just did, and your address, and?
You did so well, too, very well. Actually, my name is Colby Schwartz. I actually live in Yukon, Oklahoma, but I represent Affordable Equity Partners. We are the equity holder in this project. Erin basically said everything that I would have said. I can just say, you know, thank you to the staff, the city staff, they've been tremendous, if I can say that, and just give them a little kudos. Paula, they've all been wonderful to work with, and as he stated, the entire intent for the specific use permit is, because we still have to make application to the Affordable, or the OFA, the Oklahoma Housing Finance Authority, and if it's not approved, we just would rather not stick the land seller with a different zoning capacity. So, this way, we can make application to OFA, and if so, we can get, you know, a beautiful, affordable senior living place on the east side of Stillwater, and if not, then the land owner can still have it zoned as it is.
How large is the facility? Is that an approximate number? How many seniors could be there?
It's going to be 54 units. The large, it's basically, those two, as Erin spoke, there's two in the back that are single level, and one is six units, the other one's six units, and all the other units are in the three-story. And then it'll be mixed between one and two bedrooms. OFA requires us to have everything five-star energy savings-related, so, and then, so you're going to have washer and dryer in every unit, you're going to have a storm, the large building will have a storm shelter, and the other ones will actually have safe rooms in their own, and so, it's, to get, the way that OFA scores, if you will, you have to basically just cross every T, dot every I, to get all those points to actually be awarded the tax credits to develop the units. So, it would be, the company that I represent is out of Columbia, Missouri, and they're actually the tax credit syndicator and the equity holder, and they're, all their units are top-notch. Actually, I'm looking at, you're not looking at it. I keep looking at this, and I don't see it, but, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. At this time, I will close the public meeting and ask Mr. Baggerly to come up and say whatever he would like to say. As long as you would like.
Thank you, Mayor. Planning Commission recommendation as approval of this SUP as presented. Any questions for me?
Counselors?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baggerly. Is there a motion or recommendation?
Motion to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation. Motion to accept the Planning Commission recommendation.
Wait, they're in the planning?
There wasn't a Planning Commission.
No.
It was just a staff recommendation.
Staff.
It was, I didn't see the vote. You must have gone through it so quick that I...
Well, it's right here. We did, we took, as part of a change this year, we went with just approval of the SUP, but we can't put, we'll continue to put the vote numbers in. It was unanimous. I believe we had five commissioners present at the last meeting. It was five Z-rev.
I get some value out of seeing the vote, whether it was unanimous or whether it was split, so, sorry I missed that.
Okay, we have a motion to accept Planning Commission's recommendations, and a sec, did we get a second? Okay, motion and a second to approve CC-16-05. Please vote. And that is approved with a vote of four to zero. Next item is CC, item C, CC-16-03. Receive public comment regarding a request for a specific use permit at property addressed at 508 South Gray Street, currently zoned RTM residential two-family and multifamily district. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McNichol?
Should we have Erin again to present the report?
This is a specific use permit to allow a single-family residence in a RTM residential two-family multifamily district. The property here is outlined in purple. As you can see, this area is pretty dense, very small lot sizes, and is zoned RTM. All the way around it is set for a little RMI residential multifamily intermediate down here to the southwest corner and to the north as well. The applicant has proposed a six-bedroom home, single-family detached residential house approximately 3,000 square feet in size for this. Our parking requirements would be one parking space per bedroom. The applicant has proposed seven parking spaces for this property, as you can see here with the site plan in this area. There is some on-street parking on this road, but this would not affect any, taking any spaces off or adding any spaces based on the current configuration of this lot. There has been some issues looking at the RTM and stuff, and this being single-family in that area, there is, when you get bigger houses, a lot of people concerned about, is that a boarding house or a rooming house? Actually, that is allowed in the RTM district, but we consider this a single-family house, and we do not really have a quota on anything unless it's in the single-family district, which is RSS or RSL. So, the applicant has proposed having a single-family home and a multifamily district here, and this is a proposed site plan for this property. As you can see, it's only 50 foot by 105 foot, so a very narrow property, but with some depth, so it'd be very difficult to build a duplex on this lot. So, any questions for staff?
So, going back to your map, how close is the next single-family?
Currently, most of these houses here along the street are single families. They're older, single-family homes. As to the closest single-family residential area, I believe Walnut Street, to the west of Walnut Street, is the actual Westwood Overlay District, which is single-family homes predominantly in that area. And even south, you have a hospital south of Sixth Avenue. So, as you know, this area is pretty dense. We have a sorority house, I believe, up here. I can't remember which sorority it is, but it's one of the newer houses that was built recently.
Counselors? When I read the report, it said it allowed for minimum parking, I think?
Correct. The minimum parking that would be required is six. They go above and beyond having seven parking spaces on this, so they meet our minimal standards for parking, actually exceeding it.
So, single-family home that requires seven parking places?
Correct.
So, this is going to be used for other than single-family home, correct?
No, it'd be a single-family residence. The reason we're here is because we do not allow a single-family house by right in a multifamily district, so, but we do allow for small lots like this with a specific use permit.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And there is nobody to speak for the public hearing, so, do I still have to open it and close it?
Open it and close it.
So, I'm going to open the public hearing and close the public hearing and ask Mr. Baggerly.
Planning Commission recommended approval of this, I believe, five to zero at its last meeting.
And an SUP, you can... Well, they already have seven parking spaces not on the street, so it's not going to affect the street, okay?
Correct. There'll be no adverse impact to on-street parking in that area.
Okay. All right, counselors, discussion.
Does this, does this encourage other people to do the same thing with those? I mean, you're talking about older homes, is this going to become, you've got houses that are seven parking spaces, or how? I mean, I know you can't look in the future, but is that encourage that, I mean?
It would, when areas like this redevelop for multifamily or single-family housing, we require, particularly for smaller apartment complexes or smaller single-family homes, to require one parking space per each bedroom. So, if, say, the house to the north was to remodel but not increase the footprints or increase the size of the house or number of bedrooms, they would not be required to put in any more parking spaces, but if they were to raise the structure and to build something new like this proposed, then at that time, they would have to come back in and provide adequate parking, one per bedroom, for that, for that residence.
Anybody else? All right, is there a motion on the Planning Commission's recommendation?
Motion to accept the Planning Commission recommendation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve CC-16-03. Please vote. And that is approved with a vote of four to zero. That moves us to item D, CC-16-04. Receive public comment regarding a request for a specific use permit at property addressed at 521 South Pine Street, currently zoned RTM residential two-family and multifamily district. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McNichol?
And Mr. Baggerly will present this report as well.
Again, basically, this is the same request that we just had, single-family in a multifamily district. It is by the same applicant. It is, this was, as you see, outlined here in purple, the proposed property with this. You just approved the same thing at 508, which is right here, just to the northeast corner of it. Basically, the same house is proposed, but they have the ability to put nine parking spaces on this lot due to it, the configuration and the current curb cuts and the current lot size and the configuration of... and the configuration of the lot itself. So it exceeds the minimal number of parking spaces by three spots. Are there any questions?
How do those back cars get out?
I guess if they stack in like that, they will have to be let out by their roommate that hopefully they get along with.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baggerly. At this time, I will open the public hearing. And there's no one to speak, so I will close the public hearing and ask Mr. Baggerly the recommendation from Planning Commission.
Planning Commission recommended an announcement five to zero. Approval of this SUP as presented.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Previously, then I move that we accept this.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve CC-16-04. Please vote. And it is... The motion is passed with a vote of four to zero. That takes us to general orders. Lease Agreement Community Resourcing Incorporated for Establishment of a Community Food Bank Resourcing Center. Mr. McNichol, what action do we need to take on this item?
Mr. Dorman, I believe, has all the information you need on this.
Right, this is a... I sent you a copy of this contract out last week. This is a lease agreement with Community Resourcing Incorporated. It's a new Stillwater not-for-profit group that has entered into a contract with Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma to open a food resource center in the old Marine Armory, Albroon 12th Street. It's a 25-year agreement with a couple of option terms. And it will essentially create a one-stop shop that will allow patrons to come in and shop much as they would in a grocery store. It will provide a constant food bank resource for those who need the services as opposed to what we have now, which is a number of area churches basically distributing on a given day during the week. So this is a huge leap forward for the community. We've worked through all of the details on this. They'll share the building with the Oklahoma Department of Public Safety. They will make some very significant renovations to it to accommodate for the food resourcing center. And from a totally personal perspective, I can't think of a better use for this building or a better thing to happen to this community. And I just very eagerly recommend that you accept this contract.
Mayor, I just want to thank John for his work that he put into this. He... We had help. I know you had help from the citizens of the group that are going to be housed in the facility. But I appreciate you expediting this. And I was pleasantly surprised to see it on the agenda. I expected this to take a little longer out of you. So thank you very much for getting it done.
Well, I don't usually do something this worthwhile. And the Community Resourcing Group, several of the board members are here today. And they have been splendid to work with. Lobarto jumped in and helped out, too. And so it's like you and I talked about at the beginning of this, this is really a big thing for the community.
It is.
And I'm just glad to have played a part.
Agreed. Counselor Weaver, I would also like to...
All I did was poke Dorman. And it didn't take much. He jumped all over it.
I know that this is something that you've wanted for a long time. So we are... We will have less hungry people in town because of your work. Thank you.
I'm sure these same folks will be coming back to us asking for individual donations and support as they get...
I would like to see at least a hand of the board members who are out here tonight.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Okay, do we have a motion to accept this lease agreement or this contract?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the lease agreement contract for Community Resourcing Incorporated for Establishment of a Community Food Bank Resourcing Center. Please vote. And it is approved with a vote of four to zero. And that takes us to B, the Water 2040 Packaging... Package A Financing Plan. Mr. Dorman, I know we heard this in SUA. What do we...
Anything else that we need to... There's nothing different between what they've already heard and...
Okay, but we do need to accept this as a city council?
You'll need to actually pass the next resolution when it comes up. It's item B on resolutions.
Okay, so...
You don't have to take any action on this item.
Okay, all right. So that moves us to resolutions. Resolution number CC-2016-1, a resolution to support a housing tax credit application by JES Development Company Incorporated for development of multifamily senior housing to be located at 3098 East Sixth Avenue, Stillwater, Oklahoma. This is CC-16-06. Mr. Dorman?
This is the resolution that accompanies the item that you heard on public hearing. And this will be filed with, I believe, it's Oklahoma Housing Finance Authority. And it will support their application for the tax credits.
Okay. Counselors?
Sounds great.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve a resolution CC-2016-1. Please vote. And that is approved with a vote of four to zero. That moves us to item B, resolution number CC-2016-2, SUA-2016-1, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Oklahoma Water Resource Board for financial assistance through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Program to finance water system improvements, approving professional services agreements and containing other provisions related thereto. Mr. Dorman?
This is the city council version of the ordinance that you passed at the SUA meeting.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolutions CC-2016-2. And that is approved with a vote of four to zero. That takes us to ordinances on first reading. Mr. Dorman?
This is the ordinance... This is actually the title I'm asking you to go ahead and read tonight. But to actually accept the contract with Community Resourcing Group, we have to use a non-emergency clause ordinance in order to make a transfer of the property for this 25-year term. So I'm requesting that you approve on first reading tonight by the reading of the title of ordinance number 3333, which is an ordinance authorizing the long-term lease of a certain parcel of property located at 701 East 12th Avenue, providing for citizen-initiated referendum of said lease in accordance with section 42 of the city charter. And so if you approve this tonight, this is the first reading of that ordinance. I would bring you the second reading on the 11th. And assuming it passes both readings, then we would publish sometime next week. And then 30 days from that, I'll present to you the contract to be signed.
Okay, so are we advancing this ordinance to second reading?
Yes, ma'am. So the vote tonight would be to advance this to second reading.
I so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance ordinance number 3331 to... Or, excuse me, 3333 to second reading. Please vote. And that is approved with a vote of four to zero. On second reading... We don't have anything. That moves us to item A, reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Request an executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307B1 of the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communication regarding the employment, appointment, promotion, demotion, discipline, or resignation of the Stillwater City Manager.
Okay, and item B miscellaneous for the city from... Mr. McNichol, do we have anything?
I do. I'm excited about the passage of the resolution to start moving Water 2040 along and finally get some pipes in the ground and pumps in the ground and all those things that the Water Department does to... It will alleviate some of the pressure and capacity problems that we have and hopefully hold that system in good stead for another 25, 30 years.
Good. And thanks to the Water Department for all of their hard work. And item C miscellaneous items from city council. Counselors?
Well, we do have a really nice event coming up on January the 14th sponsored by the League of Women Voters at the Stillwater Public Library. And that is meeting your legislators. It's actually really very interesting. All of our representative, Senator, council, et cetera, et cetera, people are there. School board gives an opportunity to hear what's coming ahead in the legislative session and ask questions, meet us on a fairly informal basis. So I hope everyone will check out the library's website or show... And/or show up at the Public Library Auditorium, January 14th, Thursday, from 5:00 to 7:00.
And the next holiday coming up is Martin Luther King Day. And the Martin Luther King Day Celebration Mass Choir invites you to practice tomorrow and next Tuesday for the Martin Luther King Day Celebration, Monday, January 18th. Practice is at the Mount Zion Baptist Church, 9th and Knoblock, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. Now, this is a community-wide event, so everyone, regardless of your talent, is welcome to come and practice. You can call 405-880-1083 for more information.
They'll also be showing the movie Selma at the library on Sunday afternoon. And that will be very interesting.
The Martin Luther King Celebration at Mount Zion is just fantastic. So I encourage everybody to go. And to walk in the march from the library. Are we doing that?
I don't know. Are they doing that, Mr. McNichol?
According to what I read today, yes. So from the library to... I think there'll be one group that goes from the University of the Library, then the library to Mount Zion. And that starts at 6:30 at the library.
On Monday?
On Monday.
Monday, the 18th.
6:30 p.m., yes.
It is well worth your time.
Really been an effort, though, to make this more of a community-wide event. And I hope that people will participate.
Absolutely. Okay, anything else, counselors? Okay. I forgot to say that Counselor Nahara, we knew that he would not be here tonight. He had something else that he had to do. So we miss him, but he will be back next time. Schedule about... Any discussion about scheduling of upcoming meetings? All right. So we will go...
Could you use your magic on the mic tonight?
Well, you mean making it go a little bit faster?
Had everybody on.
I did not mean to cut Mr. Baggerly off. Okay, so I... We will... Do we have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move into executive session. Please vote. And we will move into executive session with a vote of four to zero.